Good evening, Mayor Council. I call upon President Parker to give a church's lead in prayer and that will make state good light.
I would just say this quote from various groups before we pray. It says, "It's amazing what can be accomplished when no one cares who gets the credit." Well, Jesus has come to you in the strong name of Jesus right now. We ask you, God, that you give this council, this mayor wisdom, God, to be able to do what's
Unity. God, I pray that today that this council would operate as a team and they would operate in unity. And let me just pray that the speed of truth would be here to lead them and guide them as they listen to the different issues that are arising. And God, that you give them supernatural wisdom to gain the salvation as a team. We thank you for it in that name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right off the bat. All right, to add to the people with the minutes, those minutes are forthcoming. We'll move on to item three, public hearing items. A is consideration of an ordinance to rezone 2.52 acres from single-family residential R-10 to multifamily residential RM as requested by Hickory Heights LLC. Matt Martin will present.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This first item, as you say, is a resoning. Hickory Heights LLC is requesting to rezone two parcels, not totally more than two and a half acres. The applicant is the owner of this subject property as well as the RM property that's in between and as well as the existing apartments to the north of them, which is that larger RM tract that you see. They're proposing to combine these subject properties with the property in between and redevelop all of that. There's an apartment complex with about 75 units to be managed co-terminally with the existing apartments that they already have. Zoning pattern, you see on the map on screen, which is in your packet, R-10 zoning is a carryover from once upon a time when this was a county rural neighborhood several decades ago. Single-family homes were the pattern at that time. However, the development trends have been shifted to that of multifamily as well as some commercial redevelopment. Character areas, community activity center. Interestingly, this is one of those situations where R-10 zoning is not compliant with the character area. It is simply not advanced enough. So, community activity center calls for high-density residential or commercial. Area imagery, you see the rooftops of the existing pattern. This is from about two years ago. You see the subject properties with their single-family residents that are in place as rental properties, but I think they're all currently vacant. You see the existing apartments to the north at the top of the screen. In the lower left, you see the Castle Wood Suites, the four-story extended stay hotel. And then you see the construction site of Hoppin Men's Restaurant in the very bottom corner, which is currently up and operating. Existing survey in your packet, the subject properties, this is the house that's closest to San Augustine Road on that one portion of the subject property. The northern portion has two homes on it. It's two separate lots. As you can see, they look kind of vacant. Majorities of properties, this is the view looking up Hickory Road from in front of that subject parcel. Nearly to the left is the extended stay hotel. And then you see some of the existing homes as you go up Hickory and then getting all the way to the back. When you round the corner, you see the existing apartments on the left, the subject property is there on the right, and the main entrance to the apartment complex, and then the home on the back side of the subject property. What's interesting here is you see some mobile homes in the backyard. That's a larger parcel with five of them, and that is a carryover from once upon a time. It was in the county as a very old aging mobile home park. Lots on your packet is a conceptual site plan of what they're proposing to build. This would be again the subject properties as well as the property in the middle, layout of about 75 dwelling units. And also included is a building elevation property very, very similar with the existing apartments that are there, just another four on top. Plan of commission will review this request at their October 30th public meeting. They found a consistent with a comprehensive plan. This stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they are recommending approval by unanimous vote. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
I'm Bobby Dais and I'm the developer of this project. I'm now on the project.
Bobby, how are you?
Good. Just tell her that I'm Bobby Dais and I'm the developer of this project of Hickory Heights. I'm also the owner, the developer of Harman Heights, 805 Harman Heights, which is the apartment adjacent to it. I've also developed that as well. We currently manage that, so we're looking to expand and add value to the community.
Beautiful. Counsel, any questions for Bobby? Bobby, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, I'll turn it over to counsel for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration of the meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Bobby, congratulations. Good luck. Move on to item B, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 4.33 acres from residential professional RP to community commercial CC as requested by Harden Rental Network LLC. Matt Martin again to present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This is also a zoning request. This is for property located at 2607 Bemis Road. It is the back portion of two existing parcels of that address. As you see on the screen, it's carzoned RP. We are requesting CC zoning so that it matches the zoning of the front yard of the property. I'm all told it's a little more than seven acres in size. They are proposing future commercial development on the property. The exact nature is still uncertain, although as it's stated in your packet, they are contemplating a possible kettle operation, which requires a conditional use and commercial zoning. And if they want to pursue that, then they will have to come back at a later date for a conditional use permit. Also because of the configuration of the property, probably also some variances for that operation, which would have to go to the Zone Board of Appeals. But what's before you is simply the resoning request to bring all of this property under commercial zoning. You see the pattern along Bemis Road is fairly mixed, however, commercial zoning dominates. A lot of it, particularly northward from here, is highly commercial. What they are proposing is CC, which is the middle ground, community commercial, which is what is in front of them and a little bit southward along Bemis. Character areas, community activity center also for this area along the whole Bemis Road corridor. Area imagery, most of the properties you see is wooded. You see the existing apartments, two parcels to the north. The little parcel that's nearly north is an existing veterinary clinic. Then across the street, you see Morey's South Baptist Church, and then a large, very contracted land with commercial zoning to the south. Barber survey in your packet shows the dimensions. One thing to note, if you do a little bit of math, you see that there is more than 1,200 feet distance from Bemis Road to the back of the property. There's a lot of room to work here with, which I think would be important if they go through the conditional use process with a good site plan. Area photographic imagery from the subject property, this is the property nearly on the right as we look northward up Bemis Road. Interestingly, there's an existing house on there that's about 50 years old or more. It is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to keep it and simply transform it into a business office and then build perhaps a canal operation behind it. Jacey Properties, this is the large commercial tract to the south, looking from Bemis Road eastward. And then looking southward down Bemis, you see Morey's South Baptist Church there on the right. And then pivoting around clockwise, this is the Connel Road intersection with Bemis. Plan of commission also reviewed this on October 30th. They found the resoning request consistent with the comprehensive plan. These stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet, and they are recommending approval by unanimous vote. Any questions on this one?
Counsel? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Please state your name.
Stacy Denmark. I'm the applicant, and I just am here to answer questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions for Stacy? Stacy, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this from RP to CC zoning.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Stacy, good luck. Move on to item C, consideration of an ordinance to grant planned development approval for residential plan development in R-15 zoning as requested by Trip Tally and Sam Straka. Property is located at 2206 North Oak Street. Matt will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This was a little bit different. It is a planned development request. It is not a resoning. It is simply a planned development for a single-family non-conventional subdivision in R-15 zoning. The zoning map on the screen and in your packet shows the dominance of the R-15 zoning in the area, particularly on the west side of Oak Street. The address for this is 2206 North Oak Street, which is the corner of Oak and Terrace Boulevard. You see existing OP zoning on the east side and then RP as you get eastward toward North Patterson Street. Very different land use corridors in play here. Character area for this side of Oak particularly is established residential, which means residential zoning only. Area imagery, this is from 16 years ago in 2007, which shows the previous single-family home. There was, I think, 2,200 square feet on the property with the pool. That was all demolished back, I think, in 2020. It has been a vacant lot ever since, and the applicant is simply wanting to sell the lot. But firstly, some of the photographs of the area, this is the subject property as you see it from Oak Street, the view from Terrace Boulevard, and then looking westward down Terrace Boulevard into the R-15 single-family neighborhood, the house immediately behind, which is going through some major repairs due to our hurricane. And then the house to the north on the other side of Terrace Boulevard, the house at the corner of Terrace and Oak. And I play northward up Oak Street, you see the Main Avenue intersection, and then the Pregnancy Support Center buildings that are directly to the east, the Annex Building, and then the main building a little bit to the south. Also on Oak Street to the south are these two older single-family homes that are smaller and on smaller lots. They're what we call non-conforming uses or at least non-conforming lots. In your packet is the proposed master plan. It is very simple, particularly compared to many of the planned developments that we have been seeing. This is only for three lots, as described in your packet and as we talked about the work session that boils down to this. The property is large enough for two lots, for two single-family homes under a multitude of different scenarios. Although it has plenty of street frontage for a third lot, it does not have enough land area for a third lot. But under planned development, the applicant is eligible to ask for a 20% bonus density. And with the mathematics of the 20%, it gets them to the third dwelling unit. So what they're proposing is a non-conventional creative layout of three lots. Conventionally, each lot could have its own driveway, R-15 minimums or 1,200 square feet heated area for the house, a 100-foot wide lot, and no controls over what the house would look like. This is not in the historic district. What they are proposing is one driveway shared for all three dwellings and arranged in a way that two face Oak Street to maintain an R-15 look of the property, and then the third house facing north of Terrace Boulevard. And then you see the diagrams here. It also gives you these footprints with those minimum floor areas, which you see are above the R-15 standard. Another colored drawing to show what it might look like in a future area. A view from the corner, architectural view through 3D from the corner of Oak and Terrace Boulevard, and this gives you an idea of what it would look like. And I'm told that those trees in the foreground are very close to existing trees that are on the property. They took extra care to keep those in the image. In your packet also are the proposed building elevations to demonstrate a style, which is craftsman type architecture. This is the larger house that's on the corner, I think 1,850 square feet, a very attractive looking building. And then the other two are the same floor plans, but different facade elevation drawings. One of them facing Oak, the other one facing Terrace. Also in your packet are the floor plans for these three houses that they're giving you and so forth. At the planning commission meeting, we did have a number of curious neighbors who were there. None of them spoke in opposition except for one. The planning commission did discuss this at length at the meeting and at the work session. And they are recommending approval of the planned development to you after finding it consistent with the comprehensive plan. These standards for planned development, which are in your packet, and the recommendation comes with four conditions. And these are as follows. The first one, approval should be granted for a non-conventional single-family residential subdivision in general accordance with the submitted master plan with a maximum of three detached dwelling units on individual lots, but at least 12,000 square feet, and with the depicted minimum building setback distances for each lot as shown. Permitted uses and the development shall be limited to only single-family dwellings, private gardens, internal open space, keeping of household pets, or home occupations which produce no customer or client traffic and are in strict accordance with LDR Section 21813-H. Those are the supplemental standards for home occupations. There shall be no home businesses, home daycare, accessory dwellings, personal care, and short-term rentals, or any other LDR defined permitted or conditional use allowed. In other words, they are forfeiting the ability for some of the ancillary uses that are sometimes allowed in R-15. Number two, all dwellings within the development shall reflect a generally craftsman style architecture similar to the submitted facade dwellings and shall contain at least 1,700 square feet of heated gross floor area. There shall be no metal or vinyl siding materials allowed. Number three, the development shall utilize a shared private residential driveway from Terrace Boulevard for all dwellings, and there shall be no vehicular access to North Oak Street. And then lastly, planned development approval shall automatically expire two years from the date of approval if no subdivision plan for the entire approved development has been recorded by that date. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, Matt, is it way, the CUP, I think, is it number two, is that the one that we just talked about, the square footage of the house minimum?
Number two has to do with the style and the square footage minimum for the houses.
Is it possible to modify that to where one lot can be a minimum of 1,600 square foot for the house and then the other two have to maintain the minimum 1,700?
Right, and you have the sizes that are given as examples. I think one below the 1,700 is a lot more acceptable than across the board. As you look at this layout, lot number one is a more narrow configuration than the others. Now, I can see some justification of having one maybe just a little bit smaller. So, we could stipulate that as a change to condition number two.
Okay. So, should you say whenever we kiss it up, one? Okay.
Any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Hey, my name is Trip Tally. I'm the applicant and the developer of this project. I just want to come forward and just say, Matt did a good job obviously describing everything, but I think the layout and everything that we've kind of proposed here, I think, you know, the area that it's in, I think it really, you know, it matches kind of the character area of what, you know, is surrounding it currently. So, I think it's, you know, everything, like he said, the craftsman style and all that, I think that will really, you know, be real appealing to the, to the corner side of Oak Street and everything. So, let me say, I guess, if you all got any questions, any of that for me or?
Any questions for Trip?
I don't know.
Tim? Trip, thank you. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this request? Again, seeing none, counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request as stated with the change of CUP number two to read that the minimum for one lot would be 1,600 square foot and for the other two lots, the minimum to be 1,700 square foot. Is that correct, Matt?
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Trip, Sam, good luck. Close out that portion of the, if we can move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item four, A is consideration for an ordinance to amend the city of Valdosta George Admissible Employee Benefit System, define benefit retirement plan and adoption agreement and approve the adoption of the restated plan documents. Jenny Boyer, our fantastic HR director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, that's a mouthful, isn't it? As we discussed in Tuesday's work session, this agenda item re-adopted the city adopt after retirement plan documents incorporating recent IRS-approved language changes to the adoption agreement in general tandem. It also does include a change to the eligibility conditions for participation in our specific plan, changing the number of hours regularly scheduled per week from 20 hours to 30 hours effective January 1st, 2024. This would align all of our benefits offered to full-time employees at a 30-hour per week threshold. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Jenny?
Mr. Mayor, without objection, I make an motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Jenny, thank you. I'll step back up.
Okay.
Item B, consideration of an ordinance for a new city of Valdosta personnel policies document.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item, as we discussed, is a proposed adoption of a new city adopt after personnel policies document and would replace the current document adopted in June of 2015. This re-doing will provide enduring principles and guidelines for our city's employment philosophy. Our practices and procedures will be contained in a new document that will be dynamic and responsive, allowing us to adapt quickly to an ever-changing employment environment. The separation into two documents will strike a balance between stability and flexibility, ensuring that we hold steady to our guiding principles and at the same time remain responsive to our evolving workforce dynamics. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Jenny? Jenny, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action again.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. In opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, consideration of request to adopt and approve a resolution authorizing the city of Valdosta to opt out and file a request for exclusion from the nationwide class actions settlements related to PFAS. We're going to then authorize attorneys Jay Anderson Davis and Jeffrey Friedman to represent the city individually, Richard Hardy, our city manager, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Counsel. The Three M Company and Dupont has announced a proposed class action settlement that will require each water authority in America to decide how to protect its legal rights. Given that Valdosta has been identified as a potential class action claimant, the deadline to opt out of this class settlement is December 11th, 2023. Valdosta will automatically be included in the nationwide class action unless immediately immediate action is taken to opt out of the settlement. So, the city of Valdosta wishes to opt out and file a request for exclusion of the action settlement to avoid being bound by any settlement, judgment, and/or final disposition. This will reserve the city's ability to pursue claims against offenders separately if warranted. The city of Valdosta has determined that the investigation, research, and litigation of the claims may require numerous lawyers and others who are familiar with the related issues of PFAS. It has further been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to authorize attorneys Jay Anderson Davis and Jeffrey E. Friedman to represent in such litigation and the associates of the council if needed to proceed with the claims against the companies responsible for PFAS. Staff recommends counsel approve and adopt the resolution as stated.
Counsel, any questions for Richard or for our counsel?
Can you say in layman's terms why it's in the city's best interest to opt out? Yes, I, Richard, sir. Yes, the class action that's currently proposed is just to, the amount of funding that is what appears to be is just not sufficient in the estimation of attorneys that we've discussed it with. They estimate that there only be about $12 billion, and that's with a B, in that class action, and it will be paid over eight or nine years. So, if you do have a significant problem, unless, let's hope you do not, that's the first thing, that any relief would be smaller than you need and it would be paid over that long duration. So, by withdrawing from this class action, we have the ability to go after the companies directly if, again, we determine we have a significant problem. It will, it will allow us to do that. If we do not, we will forever be barred from doing that. So, that's kind of the reason. Luckily, or hopefully, we will not have an extensive problem like they've had in Northwest Georgia.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I would like to add that based on our conversation Tuesday night, I would suggest that to the retention or the representation contract, we add the following clause to paragraph 3D, and the clause is, begins with, "Or reimbursement of expenses incurred." That would mean that it is real clear that unless there's a recovery, we will not pay any attorney fees and we will not pay any attorney expenses or expenses incurred.
And that's the three?
3D. So, if any motions made, just with that inclusion.
Counsel, any further questions for Richard or for Tim? Counsel, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion that we approve the request to adopt and approve a resolution authorizing the city of Valdosta to opt out and file requests for exclusion and also to adjust 3D to say, "Or any reimbursements and expenses incurred."
Yeah, with the, and that would be representing the retention of Jay Anderson Davis and Jeffrey Friedman.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Tim. Move on to item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of request for the purchase and replacement of West Train clarifiers at the Mud Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. Jason Barnes, our Assistant Utilities Director, to present. Jason, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, Mayor Counsel. This is a consideration request for the purchase and replacement of West Train clarifiers at the Mud Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. The Mansewes since 1977, they've made some upgrades and replacements made in 1986 and 2011. The drive motor for all the secondary clarifier were replaced between 12 and 14 years ago. The purpose of the West Train clarifier is to remove mix leak on the soil from the wastewater. The suspended soil through the irrigation tanks and can settle out in the clarifiers. Soil that settle out in the clarifier is removed to 95% removal rate. Just a little bit of facts and issues. The West Train clarifiers are not allowing the correct amount of flow from the irrigation basins. Recent studies show a 25% efficiency rate for the two efficient clarifiers compared to the 75% efficiency rate on the East Train. The low efficiency rate greatly reduces the treatment capability of the two clarifiers and negatively affects the overall plant performance. Replacing the 10-year-old plus clarifier drive and removing, there's also a rag ball that is entangled within the drive will increase the performance of the West Train clarifiers. We received three quotes. The first one was, "The Weebolt Sewers Group's option rent pricing for two new drive units for an amount of $136,756." The second one from Rock Water Equipment, it was $148,556. And the third was a West Tech Engineering in the amount of $160,250. The staff recommends authorization to approve the quote submitted by Weebolt Sewers Group in the amount of $136,756. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Jason on this? Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries. Thank you, Jason. Move on to item B, consideration of a revised intergovernmental agreement with Valdosta Housing Authority for the Griffin Avenue Affordable Housing Project. Chuck Dinkins will come up and talk about this structure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
As we discussed at the work session,
As we discussed at the work session, this is a revision to the intergovernmental agreement signed between the City of Valdosta and the Valdosta Housing Authority for the purposes of developing the Griffin Avenue project. The purpose of the restatement is to clean up certain language, clarify clarifying the terms of the construction note that's part of this agreement. The agreement, the revisions will also bring the agreement into consistency with the memorandum of understanding signed on the same subject. In addition, because the property acquisition that was contemplated in the agreement has now come to pass, a lot of the future tense verbiage in there has changed to past tense. It also provides certain opportunities to cure problems before the land in question would automatically revert to the city. Now, this does not give up the city's rights to do that, but it just allows, I'd say, inadvertent problems to be cured before we do something we can't undo. And finally, it makes clear that the city manager has the authority to sign any ancillary documents that may need to be executed in relation to this development. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Chuck?
Let me just ask this one question, which I did explain all of it to me really well. I knew that. But we are just, that note that we got from Opera is just a partial payment for the construction loan to get the land.
Yes, well, part of the Opera funding would go to the construction loan, and this document clarifies the terms of that loan. It doesn't change the amount of money. It just changes, and it doesn't even change necessarily, it clarifies the timing of the document. The intergovernmental agreement was silent on a couple of these points, and so this just puts it in writing so that it's consistent with the MOU and the understanding of about how that term, how that note would be executed.
Okay. And the other part, now, anything come up or change that you're saying that we're going to, on your bank, that the city manager is, will be the one who will make the decisions about it? You said we're giving the city manager permission to?
To sign.
Sign everything else that comes along, so all the changes and adjustments will come through, that he would sign it?
Right. He would sign what I would call ancillary documents, meaning documents that would need to be executed in order to further the approved process that's already in place by this.
No further expense, though.
No further expense.
I thought that's what you were getting at.
Thank you.
But anything he would sign would have to be in conformity with this agreement y'all are passing tonight.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions for Chuck? Chuck, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion to approve the consideration as presented.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Move on to item six, local funding and requests, consideration of request to approve a proposal to complete fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-nine consolidated plan, the fiscal year twenty-five annual action plan, and the FY twenty-twenty-five analysis and impediments to fair housing for the City of Valdosta Community Development Block Grant Program. Anitra Riley are fantastic. Neighborhood development and community outreach person is here to walk us through it.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I come before you seeking approval for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine consolidated plan. As you know, the City of Valdosta is an entitlement community, and we're required every five years to submit a complaint to HUD. City staff sent out requests for qualifications. We received five proposals that city staff is recommending that we approve Blue Salimic Solutions to complete our requested reports for twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Anitra? Anitra?
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
May I like to make a motion that we accept this proposal as presented?
Second. A motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Anitra, thank you. Item B, consideration of a request for cost sharing for the replacement of city sewer mains through a private multifamily residential neighborhood. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, will present.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Again, this is the presentation for an agreement to cost share in the installation expense of an upgraded gravity sewer trunk line. I'll go over all the details again with y'all, but this is just the differential in costs between, again, the twelve-inch line and the ten-inch line for the proposed development. Just a couple metrics that I've developed since we talked on Tuesday. This development will have one hundred and thirty-two units with over three hundred bedrooms installed. So it's a pretty robust development. It's going to be really cool to see it get built. There's going to be sidewalk connection, as I discussed, down to the ZA City Trail that goes in and through the VSU property. So overall, it's going to be a tremendous improvement to that area. So I can answer any questions that you might have about the development or the actual terms of the agreement or anything of that nature.
Counsel, any questions for Ben? Ben, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration as presented.
Second. A motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Consideration of a request to approve the final street selections for the Georgia Department of Transportation's twenty-twenty-four Local Maintenance and Improvement L-MIG Grant Program. Ben O'Dowd, again.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is just the presented list of roads for next year's road maintenance program. The main difference in this year's list versus previous year's list, as I elaborated on on Tuesday, is splitting between L-MIG and S-PLOST and dialing in the actual list of roads that we submit to GDOT for the L-MIG grant program. The list of roads is included in your agenda packet, and the map of the roads is also included in your agenda packet. I can answer any questions you have about it.
Any questions, Counsel? Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to approve the request as stated?
Second. Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Ben, thank you. Counsel, thank you. Everybody get comfortable. We're going to move on to boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. Consideration of a, consideration of an appointment to the Community Development Block Grant Citizens Advisory Committee. Yeah, I remember Don L. Davis Jr.'s term expired in February of twenty-three. He did not express an interest in being reappointed. The only applicant was Lily Roberts, so to fill that one seat, no objection from Counsel. She'll be appointed by acclamation. Move on to consideration of an appointment to the Lowndes County Board of Health. Dr. Mary Margaret Richardson, whose term expired December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two, did not express interest in being reappointed. It was advertised according to our policies. The only applicant was Susan E. Ring, a retired registered professional nurse. Again, without objection, she'll be appointed by acclamation. Item C, consideration of appointments to the Public Art Advisory Committee. Carla Penny, whose term expired June of, will expire June of twenty-five, and Al Turner, who was expiring June of twenty-four, are no longer serving on the LVAC board. These appointments, again, were advertised. Vicki Everitt and Beverly Richardson Blake were the two to fill those two slots, so without objection, those two will also be appointed by acclamation. Consideration of an appointment to the Valdosta Housing Authority. This one does require consideration. Frank Mormon, whose term will expire December thirty-first of twenty-three, has not expressed an interest in being reappointed. The applicants that have stepped forward are Dr. William Todd Kason, Program Specialist, Georgia Department of Education, and Deborah White, retired administrator, City of Valdosta. I will entertain nominations from Counsel.
That's my deployment, isn't it?
Yes, has it. But is that, is that true?
Yeah, I think I just have one of those.
Okay.
So I think this one's up for you guys appointing.
I'm on May, Deborah White.
Have one nomination. Any further? Then by acclamation, Deborah White, retired administrator, City of Valdosta, will be appointed to the, the Housing, Valdosta Housing Authority. Item E, consideration of appointments to the Valdosta Lowndes County Conference Center and Tourism Authority. Two members, Chris Jones at large and Councilman Tim Carroll, our city council appointment. Their terms expired December thirty-first of twenty-three. Mr. Jones and Councilman Carroll have expressed an interest in being reappointed. Again, with two slots and two people, I will appoint by acclamation with no objection.
I object, no.
Item F, consideration of an appointment to the Valdosta Lowndes County Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Charles Chuck Smith, whose terms as a rotating general contractor expired on June thirtieth of twenty-three. The county made the last rotating general contractor appointment, so it's the city's turn. Mr. Smith has, has expressed interest in being re-upped, so he is the only one before us, so without objection, Charles Chuck Smith will be reappointed by acclamation. G, consideration of a joint appointment to the Valdosta Lowndes County Development Authority. John Crawford, whose term is a joint appointment, will expire January first of twenty-four. He has expressed an interest in being reappointed. The appointment was advertised according to the policies, he is the only applicant, so without objection, I'll send his name over to the county for their approval, and he will be reappointed to the Valdosta Lowndes County Development Authority. Item H, consideration of appointments to the Valdosta Tree Commission. Monica Haynes, whose term expired on September sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Another member, Amy Hall, who resigned due to personal reasons. Her term will expire September sixth of twenty-four. Ms. Haynes hasn't expressed an interest in being reappointed, and there are two applicants. Monica Haynes, ground superintendent, Valdosta State University, and Justin Jacobs, regional GIS coordinator. There are two slots and two applicants. I apologize, so if there's no objection from Counsel, they will be appointed again by acclamation. That closes out that portion of the evening.
Not so fast, as they say. Let's go back to item seven D. I believe, Mr. Mayor, that is your appointment. There is, was only one nomination, but it is your appointment. If you look on the thing.
It ain't all of them.
So all those in mind every time they come up?
Yeah.
Frank Mormon.
Yeah.
I thought it was just for the resident one, Senator.
He do. Okay. I mean, I don't know, once before when I was up here, we did, and the mayor did it.
All of them were the mayor's.
Yeah, at risk of upsetting two council members tonight, I'd like to place Dr. William Todd Kason, the Program Specialist, Georgia Department of Education, on the, on the, the board for the Valdosta Housing Authority. That good? You're done? We'll move on to citizens to be heard tonight. It's the portion of the meeting that we ask you to come forward, state your name and address, and we have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to Counsel as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of Counsel in debate. It's a Counsel's policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask any groups that want to address the Counsel to designate one spokesperson, again, to ensure that all will have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard this evening?
My name is Phyllis Jackson, address to seven zero three East Commons Street. I have a great concern in that community, Mr. Dash's subdivision. Requesting consideration for speed bumps for five street coming from St. Vill Road. The traffic that come down headed east on St. Vill Road, they turned on fire, which is two blocks to Lake Park Road when you're doing the construction. They cut down there like a subway bag. The speed side is posted thirty miles per hour. We have school children coming from Doe Street, Smith Street, sometime with a parent, sometime without a parent. It's no sidewalk. This sidewalk don't stay there coming down, but when they turn off or stay there, oh, too far, going to Lake Park Road. They have to walk close to the curb or either walk up to the top of the curb. And we're worried about the children. And extra speed bumps several years ago never happened. They said that the houses do not face the street, story what was told to us. They put a pattern out there. The traffic is awful coming from St. Vill going to Lake Park Road. You got, can't use Lake Park Road going north because of the construction. The people that live in Lake Park use, come across, come down, and then turn on St. Vill Road to get to wherever they're going. But something need to be done. It's something before someone gets seriously hurt out there. All the worse. So that's what we're asking for speed bumps. If it's just one, maybe two, because it's only two blocks when they try off of St. Vill Road to get to Lake Park Road. Thank you.
You will stay until the end of the meeting, we'll have Ben O'Dowd.
Excuse me?
Our engineer, Ben O'Dowd, will approach you after the meeting if you'll stay for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? All right, we'll close out that portion of the evening and head on to Richard Hardy, our fantastic city manager, and his city manager's report.
Thanks again, Mayor. A lot of events taking place within the next two weeks. We start off our veterans' celebrations tomorrow, November the tenth, ten a.m., our annual Veterans' Day program at the Valdosta High School. Come on out and support our veterans. Again, at three p.m., the AmVets Post Six Oh Seven will also have a Veterans' Day program. So once again, come out and continue to support our veterans. Saturday at nine a.m., downtown Valdosta, Main Street, Maker's Market. It will continue to happen at the Historic Courthouse Square. Starts at nine a.m. to one o'clock. Come on out and buy some crafts. At seven p.m., the City Employees and Family Day Celebration, celebrating Blazer football. The City of Valdosta will be supporting the VSU Blazers as they play West Georgia. The city will have its own section as they celebrate and recognize the, and honor our veterans on that night also. Friday, November the seventh, at five p.m., Main Street Veterans and Military Appreciation Night with comedian Ashley Gudlemuth. This will take place at Unity Park. Prior to the event, we will have a store crawl from five p.m. to seven fifteen p.m., again, celebrating our military, supporting our military in this area. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Before I turn it over to Counsel, I'll go back to the VSU West Georgia game. The hated West Georgia Wolves are in town. It's for everything. It's for the Peach Basket. VSU wins, it's for the Gulf South Conference title. It's also proceeding in the playoffs, and if we beat them, they don't make the playoffs, so that'll feel real good, too. So please come out to VSU. It starts at seven o'clock Saturday night. Counsel, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say thank you to all the residents of District Three. The election is finally over. Seems like I've been running for office for a year and a half with all these elections coming up, but I'm really grateful and looking forward to serving the people of District Three and across Valdosta over the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other Counsel comments?
Yes. I would like to say to Valdosta Fire Chief and Valdosta Police Chief, I know that your employees are very busy. They have a lot going on and they have a lot to do, but I must commend them on their timing today when they did come to an event, when they came to a residence home. They was there, look at the split. I think they got there faster than me. It won't take me but two minutes to get there. I gotta commend them on their timing, because I know they're busy doing a lot of things, but they came, they did real good, and whoever that father was who calmed the daughter down, I think he did a real good job on calming her down, because she was very excited, and he did a real good job. So I want to tell you to thank it, to thank the employees, because they did a good job So I want to tell you to thank, to thank the employees, because they did a good job. It was somebody almost without having a heart attack about to die or so. And they did come out real quick, they took care of her, and everything went well. Just wanted to thank our police and fire department, because they were there on good timing.
Any other counsel comments? Senior member, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. All in favor.